Good evening. I'd like to call to order the December 3rd, 2024 Pinole City Council Meeting. And if you will please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Aloney people who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloney elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Aloney Land, the land that Pinole sits upon, their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. So with that, can I have roll call, please, in the City Clerk's Report and Statement of Conflict?
Thank you. Mayor Toms.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sessai.
Here.
Councilmember Tave.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez Rubin.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
City Manager Young.
Here.
City Attorney Kasher.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Stone.
Here.
Mayor and Council, the agenda was posted on Tuesday, November 26th, at 2:30 PM with all legally required notices. No written comments were received in advance of the meeting. Does the Council have any conflicts to report on our agenda items this evening? Seeing none, that concludes my report. Thank you.
We have no closed sessions, so we'll skip Items 4 and 5 and jump to Number 6, which is Citizens to Be Heard. Do we have anybody here to make public comment?
Peter Murray.
Good evening, Council, Councilmembers, Mayor. Well, I guess we're into the Christmas season, so Merry Christmas. And everybody can smile and be prepared for all the merry occasions that we routinely go through here in Pinole for the holiday. I'm looking forward to it, so I'm sure that you guys are too. What I wanted to talk about was, it just dawned on me, I was driving past the high school, and I was looking at the power poles going down Pinole Valley Road right there with all the heavy cables on them for the telephone company. And I'm thinking to myself, I'm positive we paid to have all of those removed. And they're still there, and what are we talking about? This was when the high school was being built. And what was it, Rule 12 or 24 or something like that? But we had the monies, and we paid to have those utilities taken out so that there wouldn't be an eyesore blight there on Pinole Valley Road. And they're still there. And I've noticed that what validated my thought process was they're just tied up with rope to the poles. And so it's kind of like, well, you got two things going on now. It's, you know, it's been years now, and not that the ropes that are holding it should probably be rotted by now. And, you know, those things come loose, they'll swing out to the street and take somebody out. But again, that's probably what, one, two, three, four blocks of heavy cable that should have been gone. We've paid for. Telephone company needs to get in there and take those out and reroute underground like they were supposed to. So I was just asking if you would check into that and see about getting that taken care of. And not letting them get away with not doing it, because it's probably sitting on somebody's desk somewhere, you know, and that's, like I said, been four years at least, that they should have been on it. So thank you very much, and Merry Christmas. And Merry Christmas to everybody in Pinole.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? Anymore? Okay. All right. So we will move on.
Excuse me, Mayor. It looks like we do have one. Sir, go ahead up to the podium. You can provide me, yes, just state your name for the record, please, right up here.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Michael Baum. I had one comment, and this is probably best directed for TAPS, but I haven't been able to get to a meeting. I think one of the worst traffic backups in town is at I-80 going westbound. It just tends to back up there because of all the new shopping center and that. If solution would be to get a right-hand turn lane, now I've been told that that's not possible because some of the equipment boxes that are owned by Caltrans and stuff. And I would think a solution there is simply go around them. And if you have to, eminent domain, a little piece of the parking lot from the bowling alley. And that would give you the room you need to build a directional lane on that. And I will suggest that to TAPS, but solution, maybe start thinking about that, keep that in mind. And that would really take care of the backup there. So. And the other thing is, I just wanted to recognize Matt Avery here for all his service to the city of Pinole and all that. He's retiring this month, and we're going to miss him sorely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
No other public comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Reports and Communications. I'll start with the Mayor's Report. I will note that we had a West County Mayors and Supervisors meeting here two weeks ago, and we made the recommendation that we would go quarterly. And for those quarterly meetings, they would be more aligned with certain themes for each meeting. For instance, a meeting in April would include a legislative update from our staff person from Cal Cities. There might be, you know, topics of regional economic development, and marketing opportunities at a meeting, public safety updates, discussions on transportation, infrastructure utilities, and also social service impacts. Might also happen in April, and that would be because that's around the time that the County Board of Supervisors are working on their next fiscal year budget, and those topics are discussed. So the next, for the next six months, those meetings will be managed by the City of Hercules, and again, going quarterly with that. And then the other item is that I attended a webinar today, and it was sponsored by the East Bay Leadership Council, and they had a presentation from Metropolitan Transportation Commission discussing pricing of freeway lanes. And this is something that is in, it's one of the items that is in their Bay Area 2050 Plan. And it may be a way that, you know, sort of like toll lanes on the freeway, they're studying it. But it would be a way to, you know, move people off, away from single occupancy cars into transit. But the study did not talk about impacts to local roads, which a lot of people would, you know, not go on the freeway, they would use, for instance, San Pablo Avenue. So those are things that we all brought up to the presenter, and this is only the first phase of their discussions. So that was a good presentation, and that's the end of my report. I will, I have no other announcements and no appointments, so I'll move to our Vice Mayor to see if he has a report.
Thank you, Mayor Toms. I have a very brief report today. So our original Westcat Board of Directors meeting was scheduled on December 12th. That was canceled and is now moved to January 9th, 2025. So looking forward to meeting with the board in the New Year. And we have a very exciting and fun promotion for December. So if you do see a bus on Westcat that has a very festive wrap that says, "Have a holly, jolly holiday", that bus will be providing free rides for the month of December. So look out for that, and if you see it, just know your ride is free. So thank you, Mayor Toms.
Thank you. And that bus was on Route 19 today, so it switches routes throughout the system. So I will turn to Councilmember Murphy. Do you have a report tonight?
Just a brief report. Happy holidays, everyone. Great to be here. I hope a very warm and loving community holiday season. We have tons of events that you can check out on our City Pinole website. And yeah, it'll be a great festive season. I also just want to say that the Contra Costa Elections Office has now certified the results of the 2024 election, so it'll be great to be here for another four years. Looking forward to more, and thank you again for our staff, our City Clerk's Office, for your involvement in the election season, your leadership in the election season. And again, looking forward to doing some great work for the city. So thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martinez Rubin?
Thank you. Happy December, everyone, and along with good wishes. Please think about the other kinds of things that linger at this time of the season. So if you can, access your either healthcare provider or other services to get your COVID and flu shots and prevent further spread of that in our community. I don't have other, let's see, no, I do have, very briefly. I also attended the webinar on road pricing sponsored by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. A couple of things to note is that the implementation of that kind of road pricing or putting a fee on toll use would possibly, the earliest, be implemented in 2035. Between now and then, the second stage of studies are to be conducted, and among those is that very key question for us in Pinole and neighboring East Coast cities like Hercules and San Pablo that share San Pablo Avenue, which is an arterial and adjacent to a major freeway, I-80, which impacted even now, without tolls, additional tolls on all of our freeways and vehicles leading up to the use of I-80, we are impacted when there is traffic congestion as is. So more to be studied. A little disappointing that that key concern is not one that is now, up until now, has been studied, because as far as I can recall, my service on a couple of transportation committees that matter was very, very relevant to us who access the regular roads and/or periodically use public transportation. So if indeed the study is leading toward increased tolls, the intent is there for the public to go back or access public transportation. And so the question is, how do we improve public transportation as is? Because there are still safety and concerns, as well as frequency concerns. That is, it could be more attractive if we were to wait less time to use public transportation between routes. So that's it. Part of, not so much an announcement, maybe more of an editorial comment, but thank you for the time and for listening, and be well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tave?
Just happy holidays, everybody, and that's all I have to report. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to, actually, future agenda items. I have none. Anybody else have any? Okay. All right, then we'll move to City Manager Report and Department Staff Report.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I have a few things I want to share. One, I have now been here three months, and I'm very, very happy to be here. And again, I just want to thank the community for all your support, as well as all of the council members. And so a few things just to be aware of. So business license renewal forms have been mailed out to all businesses. And one of the great things is we have our new licensing and permitting platform, so business owners now have the option to pay renewal fees online. Again, they are always welcome to come on in as well. This weekend, on Saturday, we do have our tree lighting, as well as our Pinole Shop and Stroll, and we really hope to see as many of you there as possible. We're very excited to have our shop and stroll with our businesses. And we'll, you'll be able to have a passport and visit our various businesses, and it's a great way to show support in downtown Pinole as well. On a little bit more of a serious note, our well-loved former employee, Robert Walker, who we're going to be honoring a little bit tonight, has historically lit the tree. And so we are asking Robert Walker's Tracy, Robert Walker's daughter Tracy, who is here with us tonight, if she would be willing to light the tree for us this weekend. Thank you so much. It means a lot to all of us. We really appreciate that. And so also, we have, this is the last week to sign up for Pancake Breakfast, which will be held on December 14th. So hoping to see as many of you there as well. It's a great way to support our recreational department, as well as see the community, and Santa will be there. And then we also have some exciting news, where the United States Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for All has awarded Contra Costa County for a multi-jurisdiction corridor planning speed reduction grant for 1.6 million, and they have included Pinole in that as well. They will be looking at San Pablo Avenue and Tenet, and looking at doing some additional planning and possibly some demonstration projects for a safety corridor. We are also excited to share several updates that reflect our dedication to safe and affordable housing, equity, and sustainability. We are honored to have received a $650,000 competitive grants award from the State of California in recognition of our efforts in affordable housing, and our recent pro-housing designation. Combined with matching grant funding to be secured over the next two years, this award will generate a $1.3 million investment in low and moderate income housing asset fund with at least 30% allocated to extremely low-income housing. So we're really excited to have that coming into Pinole. And guided by an upcoming City Council policy, this funding will drive our housing element goals of expanding equity and housing opportunities for all residents. Additionally, Pinole has also been awarded a two-year policy fund grant from the Partnership for the Bay's Future to support innovative housing initiatives. Through this grant, a PBF fellow will collaborate with city staff and our partners, with Richmond Community Foundation and the Northern California Land Trust, to develop impactful programs. And these include an Affordable Housing Fund Policy Guide, a social impact bond program to revitalize homes, and promote first-time homeownership, and affordable housing enhancements to our rental programs. So we are very excited to get to share all of that. And on top of that, we've also received a $30,000 competitive grant from MCE's Community Partnership Program. And this funding supports clean energy initiatives, climate adaptation, efforts, and community engagement, strengthening our partnerships with MCE. And so I just wanted to say a quick thank you to all of the departments that have been involved in bringing in that funding, because that is considerable. So just big thank you to you all. And then finally, one other piece that is exciting is construction is underway at the Pinole Vista Shopping Center to install 16 Tesla Superchargers between Carl's Juniors and Big Five. This project is a significant step in advancing sustainable transportation locally, and completion is expected by early 2025. So really excited about that. So really excited about that. Also want to remind everybody to please feel free to take advantage of my office hours, which are every Thursday from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., or by appointment, especially if you have any questions about operational pieces, or contracts, or other pieces that you feel should be moving forward, please come free to meet with me, and we'll see about getting you an update on any of those projects. So that's all from me. Thank you.
Great. Excellent work, staff. City Attorney Report?
Thank you, Mayor Toms. Happy holidays to all. Just wanted to briefly mention, with the turn of the, you know, we're in December and the turn of the new year, there was an active legislative session this past year with the state legislature. So there are a number of new laws that are coming into effect on January 1st. So we're going to prepare a memo for city staff. There's about 31 bills that impact the city internal operations. So we'll be sending that around just as a reminder to staff, and to the extent that any of that information would be good and relevant for members of the public, we'll make sure to promote that and share that either on our website or in some other forum. So just wanted to provide that reminder, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will move on to proclamations, and we have several very important proclamations tonight. We're going to start with remembering Robert Walker. So that's remembering Robert Walker and his lifelong dedication to service. Whereas Robert Walker's commitment to serve began in the California Army National Guard, where he served 20 years before retiring as a staff sergeant, and?
Whereas from December 1974 to June 1978, Robert joined Pinot's neighboring agency, the city of Richmond, as a maintenance worker. And whereas on October 9, 1979, Robert started his career serving the city of Pinot by working in the Public Works Department as a maintenance worker, and?
Whereas in 2002, Robert temporarily assisted the Recreation Department as a drop-in gym attendant, and?
Whereas on October 9, 2024, Mr. Walker celebrated 45 years of service with the city of Pinot, the city's most tenured employee. And whereas on October 13, 2024, the city of Pinot grieved the loss of Robert Walker after 45 years and four days of dedicated service.
Now therefore, I, Maureen Toms, Mayor of the City of Pinot, County of Contra Costa, State of California, on behalf of the city council and the entire city of Pinot, do hereby remember Robert Walker for his exemplary service to the city of Pinot. So. So thank you for that. I'm gonna, we will give you the, give his family the proclamation, but I wanted to see if our city manager, did you have some words to share first?
I will give some words at the end of all three.
Okay, all right. So if the council would like to join me, please, in giving this to family members, please join me.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Walker, and I have the honor and the privilege of standing before you today as the daughter of Robert Walker Jr. It is with a heart full of pride, gratitude, and emotion that I accept this proclamation honoring the incredible life and legacy of my father. On behalf of my family, I want to extend our deepest thanks to the entire city of Pinot, to Public Works, the Pinot Police Department, Fire Department, City Manager, City Council Members, Personnel Department Committee, and all of the city of Pinot staff who worked to make this day possible. Thank you for your acknowledgement of my father's dedication, of hard work, loyalty, and dedication means more to us than words can express. For 45 years, my father served this city with an unwavering commitment and quiet strength. He didn't show up every day for recognition or accolades. He served because he loved this community. To him, Pinot wasn't just a workplace, it was a second home filled with people he deeply respected and cared about. The relationships he built, the lives he touched, and the example he set will forever leave a mark on this city. My father was not just a dedicated public servant, he was a man of integrity, compassion, and humility. He treated everyone with respect and kindness. He believed in the potential of others, whether it was a coworker, a neighbor, or someone in the community. He made people feel valued and supported. He believed in the power of hard work, the importance of helping others, and the strength of perseverance, no matter challenges. His philosophy was simple yet profound: work hard, lead with love, and never give up. These values guided him every day and defined the way he lived his life. His legacy is a testament to the kind of person he was, someone who believed in building a better future, not just for himself or family, but for the entire community. As I stand here today, I am overwhelmed by the outpouring of love and respect for my father. This proclamation and the honor of commemorating his name in the city of Pinot are far more than symbolic. They are a reflection of his life's work, his unwavering dedication, and the impact he had on all of us. To each of you who worked with him, shared a kind word, or called him friend, thank you. Your support and recognition of his legacy means the world to me and my family. My father believed in the power of community, and seeing this room filled with so many people who cared for him is a true testament to the life he lived. On the behalf of the Walker family, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for honoring him in this way and ensuring his legacy continues to inspire and uplift others. I would like to take this time out to thank Battalion Chief Jim Brooks, former PFD; Engine 74 Captain Matt Lewick, former PFD; Engineer PM Dale Bloom, former PFD; Firefighter Anthony Pallone; Engine 73 Captain PM Stephen Dorsey, former PFD; Engineer Patrick Kelly, and firefighter Eric Lopez. I would like to thank Aguado Quentin Alvarez, Joseph W. Blingman, Michael Jacob Brock, Natalie Lee Bull Lewis, and Dewayne Bruce Chappell, John D. Evans, Matthew R. Jones, and Robert Culett Jr., Anthony T. Wilson, Sanjay Mashara, and the following, Jocelyn Gutierrez, Cameron Sassi, Norman Martinez, Fiona Epps. I would like to thank Heather Bell, Olivia Rojo, Roxanne Stone, Stacy Bell, and most importantly, Charlene Davis. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, and we're going to continue to thank those that were mentioned in our next proclamation. That's honoring first responders for their exemplary lifesaving efforts on October 8, 2024. On this day, we extend our heartfelt gratitude and recognition to the first responders who displayed courage, professionalism, and unwavering dedication in providing critical aid.
Whereas on October 8, 2024, first responders answered the call to provide critical aid and assistance, demonstrating extraordinary bravery, skill, and compassion during the time of need, and?
Whereas their swift and skillful intervention ensured the safety and well-being of an individual in need, and?
Whereas their efforts directly benefited City of Pinot employee Robert Walker, whose well-being was preserved through their expertise and compassion, and?
Whereas their swift actions and unwavering commitment exemplify the highest standards of service and sacrifice, embodying the values of honor, integrity, and resilience in times of crisis.
Now therefore, I, Maureen Toms, Mayor of the City of Pinot, County of Contra Costa, State of California, on behalf of the city council and the entire city of Pinot, present this proclamation as a testament to our enduring appreciation and respect for the first responders who stand ready to serve, protect, and support our community. And with that, I would like to again ask the council to join me and all of you. It will be a big group, all of you that were involved in the, in the call on October 8th. Thank you.
My name's Captain Ludwig. I'm captain with Contra Costa County Fire, former employee of Pinot, is still a hometown. That's why I didn't leave for this. It's a homegrown with family, employees, they're part of the family. On that night, or on that morning, got a call with a vehicle rollover, attached 73, had extrication equipment, got on scene, realized it was a city employee. Fast action by the paramedics. Steve Dorsey's a medic. I had Dale Bloom as an engineer paramedic on there, and I do believe Colin Truster might have been on there. So that morning kind of hit home, not for me, just in the fact of being here. I grew up here, went to high school here, and along with Steve Dorsey, too. That's why we didn't leave for this. And unfortunately, it was an employee, it was a father, an uncle, a friend. So it was kind of traumatic when that happens. You know the people. I go walk in these houses every day, and I do see familiar faces, I see people on the wall, and that's why I do this job, is because of this. The aspect of yes, it's just, it meets a little bit more. And so just being homegrown and the situation that we had that morning with the Pinot employee with the truck, city vehicle, so it was kind of, kind of traumatic going when we came around the corner. They did say that there was a person that was trapped in there, but they actually had pulled them out and started working on him. So to the family, I'm sorry for your loss. Like I say, we did the best we could. And like I say, he will be truly missed. Thank you.
Stephen Dorsey, captain with Contra Costa County Fire, formerly with Pinot Fire. I started working for Pinot Fire about 20, in there. It, I started working for Pinot Fire about tw- uh, in the early two thousands. So I've known Robert for a long time. Also grew up in the community, went through elementary school, through high school here. Even as a young child, riding my bike all through town, doing who knows what. I remember, I remember Robert out on the street working, whether it was patching potholes, popping manhole covers. Even as a child, he would engage me. So it was a pleasure to work with him for twenty-some-odd-plus years with the city. And like Matt, Matt explained, um, we go to these types of calls on a regular basis, but this one was personal because of our relationship, working alongside him for many years. But I would like to thank everyone that was there from PD, Public Works, other city officials that showed up. Everyone had a role to play on the ins- on the scene, plugged in. It worked seamlessly. So I, I think that collaborative effort between our fire district and the City of Pinot employees gave Robert the best possible chance for a positive outcome, and unfortunately, that wasn't the case. And again, I'm sorry for your guys' loss. That's all I have to say. I just thank you for taking time tonight to recognize the family and the legacy of Robert Walker.
Thank you. Thank you both. Your efforts gave his family a few more days, so that was important. Yes, Matt?
This one, uh, for everyone hit home a lot closer than most. Having been with, been with the police department for twenty-five years as an officer and just knowing that it was one of our own, didn't change how we responded in our professionalism, but it changed the emotion. Being the PSAP, the primary, or the public safety answering point, we got the call from a citizen and seeing how it affected not only, you know, started with the dispatchers to the officers on scene, Sergeant Duggan and Officer Lewis, first on scene, performing CPR. I arrived on scene, seeing the paramedics, the fire crew. As an administrator, you know, I could stand back and watch with pride that we were doing everything we could. The EMS worked the way it should. The system worked the way it should. Not the outcome we wanted. Tracy, you mentioned, uh, your father led his life with love. I called my wife later on that day and explained that Robert had passed away, and she said, no, not Robert. You know, being, uh, living here in town, raising my family here in town. We didn't just get to know the police department employees, but my family got to know all the employees. And Robert lived his life with love. She said, oh, no, not him. He was the friendliest guy, always there to serve. So I can attest from my family that he left, lived his life with love. So thank you very much for your, his service.
Thank you, Chief, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. So I have some things that I'd like to say, but if, I think I'll wait until the last proclamation and say them all at once, partially to give myself a moment.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you all for being here. Our next proclamation is honoring Matt Avery upon his retirement as Pinot's acting police chief. Whereas Police Chief Matt Avery graduated from Campbell Linda High School in nineteen ninety and went on to attend Diablo Valley College and California State University, earning an AA in liberal arts and a certif- certificate in administration of justice. And whereas Chief Avery began his law enforcement career as a volunteer with the Maraga Police Department, serving as an explorer and community services officer from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-four.
Whereas he was hired by the Pinot Police Department as a community service officer in May nineteen ninety-five, serving until July nineteen ninety-seven, when he resigned to attend the Los Madanos College Basic Police Academy, graduating in nineteen ninety-seven. And whereas he was hired as a police officer in October nineteen ninety-nine, and...
Whereas Matt was appointed detective in April two thousand five, serving until December two thousand seven, during which time he was a member of the Incident Cr- Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. And whereas in two thousand eight, he completed the South Bay Regional Training Center of California Post Supervisory Course, and...
Whereas he was promoted to lieutenant in twenty seventeen and commander in twenty twenty-three. His assignments included report writing instructor, field training officer, field tr- uh, training supervisor, bicycle patrol, crime scene investigator, fleet manager, and public information officer, and... Whereas Matt has been recognized with the Police Officer of the Year Award in two thousand one, Supervisor of the Year in twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen, and the Fallen Heroes Award in twenty eighteen, and...
Whereas he has been involved in the Special Olympics Law Enforcement Tour run since twen- uh, two thousand three and has served as the West Contra Costa County Agency Coordinator since two thousand twenty-twelve. He was named the twenty twenty-two Special Olympics Northern California Law Enforcement Volunteer of the Year, and...
Now therefore, I, Maureen Toms, Mayor of the City of Pinot, on behalf of the City Council and the entire City of Pinot, commend Matt Avery for his explanatory service and wish him the best in his retirement. And I'll ask the council to join me.
Well, good evening again, mayor, council, staff, and members of the public. I'm honored and humbled to be recognized this evening. It doesn't seem that long ago that I applied as a community service officer here and then going through the testing process as a police officer. I remember on the oral board when then Sergeant Peak Jenke asked me why I wanted to work for Pinot. I told him I wanted to work for a smaller agency where I wasn't just a number. And this room tonight is a testament of that, that we are not just numbers. We get to know each other. We're family. We care about each other. And we're here not only for the community, but for the welfare of our fellow coworkers. I also told him that I wanted to find a home that I could retire from. And I was fortunate to be given that opportunity with Pinot. And Pinot not only became my career home, but it also became the home for my family. I've been blessed to serve the community of Pinot, and I'm grateful for every opportunity that the city has given me. It's beyond my wildest dreams, truly, truly blessed. It's been an honor to work alongside and lead a department of dedicated men and women who selfishly, selfishly serve the community. And to be able to serve out my final few months as acting chief was just something I never dreamed of. Thank you, Kelsey. I thank former, now retired Chief Gang for the opportunity and the support of everyone in this room that has made that possible. We have climbed peaks together, and we've been through the valleys together, but I knew I could always count on the support of my coworkers, the city, and the community. Looking back, there's no other place I would have wanted to serve my career than Pinot, and I will forever be grateful and thankful. And lastly, I want to thank God for the blessings in my life and His provisions, and my wife for being the bedrock of the home. Don't know what the future has in store for us, but I'm excited for the next chapter of my, of our life together. Thank you for being by my side for almost thirty years, and I look forward to many more. Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn it over to our city manager for some remarks.
Thank you. Um, wow. So I have to say that at this moment, I feel very inadequate and humbled to be sitting amongst all of you right now. I would like, I think it is important for all of us to kind of take a moment and just revel in the profound significance of tonight's proclamations. First, I want to speak a little bit about Robert. Um, I met Robert my second day here. And in a firm one, I hear is a rather uncharacteristic, um, chatty mood that he was in. He told me pretty much everything I needed to know about Pinot and became one of the people that immediately made me feel comfortable here and, um, that I would like to be able to call a friend. Um, Robert is always going to be in Pinot's heart. Everyone has reached out to talk about how much he means to them, how they would like to see the courtyard named after him, how they would like to do all of these various things to honor him. And it is amazing, amazing, um, to come into a community and see the type of love and support that they show for each other and definitely that everyone shows for Robert. Um, his service record is amazing. I mean, forty-five years, that's longer than a lot of us are alive. And, um, it's, it's truly incredible. His service record is a testament to his love for the city and his work family that he considered to be his second home and, um, where he wanted and chose to spend his life. And that is something that is truly remarkable. So, um, Robert's truly made Pinot a better place. I think we all see that, and he will forever be loved and in our hearts. He was so dearly loved by family, friends, and residents and his coworkers that when he needed help on that day in October, um, the entire Public Works team came to his aid alongside fire and police. And even in the most desperate moments, they acted swiftly and did the right things to help give Robert a fighting chance. And by the way, I was not going to cry, but apparently that ship has sailed. So Joe, Matt, um, Mike, Eddie, um, Nate, Tony, Rob, Bruce, Patrick, and Brian, please all stand up. I remember being on the phone with Sanjay as none of you were willing to leave, and you continued to be there by his side as long as you could. Also, um, Officer Lewis and Sergeant Duggan, please step forward. I want you to all notice the size of Officer Lewis. And, but the two of them were there and pulled him from the vehicle and started CPR. And then all of our wonderful fire crew who are on duty, would you please stand up? We all know, as, as you all have mentioned, this was someone who you consider to be one of your own, and we know, um, how hard you worked to give him that extra chance and those extra days to be there with his family. So again, thank you. And honestly, from the bottom of our hearts, um, thank you for your bravery and compassion. It's, it is not just an everyday thing. We know that you all are out there being heroes every day, but this is, this was above and beyond, and we want to say thank you. And also, last but not least, I definitely want to emphasize my appreciation for Chief Matt Avery. Matt has been, um, for me, my chief while I have been here, during the times that I have been here, he's given me all sorts of guidance and support. And his legacy goes beyond the City of Pinot, as he's made such an impact across several organizations through his leadership and volunteerism and compassion and just besides being, you know, our chief. He's an amazing resident in Pinot. Chief Avery sets the bar high, and I think we can all agree that his shoes will be hard to fill. His upcoming retirement is very bittersweet. While we will miss him tremendously, we're also excited for this new chapter and for his time to spend with his wife and, and at his farm. We wish you the very best as you get to spend more time with your grandbabies, camping in the Sierras and building that beautiful home on your farm. So thank you for your exceptional work and all that you've done for Pinot. For all of you that I just mentioned, I just want to stand and say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. I'm going to turn to the council to see if any of you have any comments. Go ahead.
Tracy and the Walker family, for your, the beautiful words that you shared about your father. It takes a tremendous amount of courage, yes, emotion, but definitely feeling. And, um, it was more an honor for me to hear you than to hear that it was an honor for you to have us do this. The loss of a life is, is a tremendous loss, and as I whisper to you, let it out as much as you can, as often as you want, cry and laugh. I'm sure you have lots of beautiful, beautiful thoughts about your father over time that will sustain you and your family members. To the team that helped Robert Walker that day, I imagine that it's also very difficult for you in retrospect, knowing that you did all you can, or you could. And to have used your skills over time, and yet fate took a different turn for the Walker family. But we keep going. You keep going, and you keep polishing your skills for the next time around when we might need you. So thank you for being there. And to Matt Avery, I'm glad that we, you know, there was a kind of this happy twist to this evening with you entering another phase of your life. It does seem like yesterday I saw you riding your bike, on bike patrol. Especially personally for me, I thank you for your service as a volunteer for Special Olympics. And enjoy your time on the farm. Enjoy in good health, you and your family, and thank you for your service to Pinot.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, I'll wrap it up by, again, extending my deepest condolences to the Walker family. Tracy, your words were spot on of how I've known Robert over the years, and you just spoke so eloquently about him. For the first responders and the, um, you know, everybody in this room... For the first responders and the, you know, everybody in this room, we have overwhelmingly public employees here, and you don't become public servants just for the paycheck, you, you do it because of the passion. And it's nights, you know, like tonight, that where we see that passion, how it really impacts other community members, whether it's, you know, Public Works Maintenance, our Police Department, or our firefighters. And I just, you know, really want to commend all of you and all public employees for, for that passion that you show. And Matt, I hope I still see you on the Special Olympics world. You know, for those of you who have, who've seen Matt, you know, in his, with his police career, I've been honored to, to see him for the, you know, last fifteen years or so through Law Enforcement Torch Run and the Bike the Bridges program. So, I even was present when he won the Law Enforcement Officer of the Year down in Santa Clara, and we were just so proud. Our team that went down there was just so proud that that's our guy. So, I wanted to, again, thank you for that, and hopefully you either have a successor or you're not going to step away from that role. But anyway, congratulations. So, with that, thank you all for being here for these important proclamations, and we have no presentations, but we do have our consent calendar. We have three items, nine, nine A through C. Are there any comments on any of those items? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve consents, con, calendar, items on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, thank you. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes, five zero. And then the next item on the agenda is public hearings. This is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 10.56 Speed Zones of the City of, the City of Pinole Municipal Code, and we will have a staff report.
And Mayor, I'm just wondering if we can motion for maybe a five-minute recess and then have people saying goodbye and?
Yeah, we can do that. Let's, um, let's recess for five minutes.
I need a?
Thank you for that. Okay, we're going to reconvene. Ooh, you have new shoes. Okay, thank you for that. We're going to reconvene, item 10A. So, I would ask folks that want to continue, just, the lobby is available. Okay, so, we're continuing our public hearing, and this is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 10.56 Speed Zones of the Pinole Municipal Code, and we do have a staff report by Fabi Gullian. Gullian? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Toms. Good evening, Air Casher, City Attorney, and I'll be presenting with our Capital Improvement Environmental Program Manager, Fabi Guillen. And so, this is the ordinance amending Chapter 10.56 of the Pinole Municipal Code. Next slide. So, the staff recommendation this evening is for the city council to conduct a public hearing and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 10.56 Speed Zones of the Pinole Municipal Code and adopt a resolution approving the revised Engineering and Traffic Survey. Next slide. Just by way of background, and this is a little bit of a repeat of the last meeting where this was presented, Assembly Bill 43 was effective January twenty, in January of 2022, and it provided some updates to the vehicle code and more flexibility for cities in adopting and setting speed limits throughout its jurisdiction. The California Vehicle Code, Section 22348 et sec, that's the section of the California Vehicle Code that really governs speed limits and increases, and it requires cities adopt speed limits in a prescribed manner and then codify those changes in the city's municipal code. Chapter 10.56 in the Pinole Municipal Code is the chapter of the municipal code where our speed limits are identified, and we set forth the speed zones and then related speed limits that have been approved by the city council and supported by an Engineering and Traffic Survey. Next slide. So, last meeting on November nineteenth of 2024, the city council received a presentation on the 2024 Engineering and Traffic Survey that was prepared by Wildon Engineering. The city council approved the proposed survey with a few minor edits and recommended staff prepare an ordinance reflecting the proposed updates. And Fabi will provide some, an overview of the recommendations and what we'll be seeing in the ordinance.
I'm not sure if your mic is on.
Okay.
All right, can you hear me? Ah, okay, good evening. My name is Fabi Guillen. I am the Capital Improvement and Environmental Manager for Public Works. Thank you, City Attorney Casher. So, this is just a follow-up from our presentation last November nineteenth. These are the recommendations by staff based on the engineering and speed survey that was done by Wyndham. The recommendations that we're bringing forth are on the screen right now, and I wanted to make a couple of mentions. Council requested that staff reviewed or reassess segments six and seven, which is not listed here, and I'm going to refer back to those. But for now, I, I wanted to bring up this, the segments that are on your screen, those are the areas where we are finding the reductions in speed. Segment four, as you can see from Pinole, it's on Pinole Valley Road, from Tenant Avenue to Granada Court, and we are recommending, or it's being recommended, reduction by five miles per hour to the current limit of thirty miles per hour. The next, the next segment is also on Pinole Valley Road, from Granada Court to Seamus Avenue, and it also is recommended to drop by five miles per hour. The next segment is segment six, Pinole Valley Road, from Seamus Avenue to the end of city limit, at South City Limit, and this is one of the requests by council to analyze and reevaluate, and which we, which staff did, and the traffic study proved that it was considered a zone that was, created high concentrations of pedestrians and bicycles, and therefore it was recommended that the limit was dropped, be dropped five miles per hour as suggested. The next segment is on San Pablo Avenue from Oak Ridge Road to Sunny View Drive, and the recommendation is to drop, to drop that limit by ten miles per hour. And similarly, San Pablo Avenue on Sunny View Drive to West City Limit is a reduction of ten miles per hour. Segment seven, which we don't see here, is San Pablo Avenue from Oak Ridge Road to the East City Limit, and that is already, has a posted limit of twenty-five miles per hour. And council asked if we could reevaluate that and reassess it to see if it could be dropped an additional five mile, miles per hour, and the engineering survey advised against that. We are not legally allowed to do that. The, the limit is already at its, at the lowest that it can be, which is twenty-five miles per hour. So, we wanted to report back on that. And I, next slide, please. So, I have a graph, a map of what now the speed limits will look like, and so from Tenant Avenue on Pinole Valley Road, you can see the drop from thirty to twenty-five miles to Granada Court, and from then on to the South City Limit, you go down to thirty miles per hour from the thirty-five posted limit. Next slide, please. And this is San Pablo Avenue from the West City Limit to Sunny View Drive, which has, will be dropping ten miles per hour to thirty mil, to thirty miles per hour. Next slide, please. And finally, the San Pablo Avenue segment from Sunny View Drive to Oak Ridge Road, also dropping ten miles per hour. And so, where you don't see the green line anymore, that's when we, it's already at twenty-five miles per hour to the East City Limit. And those are the recommendations that we're bringing forth in the additional two segments that we analyzed at council's request last November nineteenth. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of staff?
Actually, there's just a few more slides. Yeah, so thank you, Fabi. So, just wanted to highlight some of the, the proposed ordinance. So, the ordinance codifies the recommendations of the recommended speed limits from the Engineering and Traffic Survey. There is a resolution included in the council packet that is an approval of the revised Engineering and Traffic Survey, so the revised survey reflects the changes that, based on the recommendations from the last meeting, and so that's been updated. I did want to just make note of a typo in the resolution, so this is now on page 130 of the packet. The resolution in segment six, Pinole Valley Road, Seamus to South City Limit, it, it reflects a new miles per hour of three hundred miles per hour. That's pretty excessive. It's actually thirty, and so it's a decrease of five miles per hour. The correct number is thirty, so the, the final resolution will reflect the, that change. And then I also wanted to note that in Chapter 10.6 of the municipal code, there's a current section that reflects those sections and segments where there's an increase to the speed limits. The traffic survey did not recommend increasing any speed limits, so we're removing that section of the chapter of the municipal code with this proposed ordinance. Next slide. The fiscal impact for the proposed ordinance would be minimal, and it's really just the cost associated with changing the signs for the speed limits on the affected road segments. The city council approved a budgeted amount for the annual signage program, and these costs will be covered as part of that program. Next slide. And so, the staff recommendation is to, is twofold. One, to waive the first reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 10.56, and then adopt the resolution approving the revised Engineering and Traffic Survey. And staff is here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments on this?
Yes, we do. Rafael Menes and Arma Ruport.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff, and Public. My name is Rafael Menes. I just wanted to comment to ensure that the typographical error was corrected, seeing as the city's caught it and is accounting for it. I have no further comment. I'm going to sign off. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff, and Public. A real quick question. Was San Pablo Avenue downtown, is this one of the changes, or was it omitted, or it wasn't suggested? Do you know? The downtown Pinole?
Yeah. I'm happy to answer it.
Yeah.
So, that would be the segment between, I believe it's Oak View to the East Limit, segment seven, so it, it currently is at twenty-five miles per hour, and that is the, the lowest that we can reduce the speed limit to. We considered, you know, making this a business district, so there is a provision in the vehicle code that allows for a reduction of five miles per hour if it's designated as a business district, but there's a condition that has to be met, which is that you can't go from a twenty, twenty mile per hour speed zone to a forty mile per hour. to a 40 mile per hour speed zone. And that would be the case because that stretch, if we dropped it to 20, once you enter Hercules, it becomes 40 miles per hour. And so that would be considered like a speed trap. And so the vehicle code does not permit that. So unfortunately, we have to just leave segment seven, the downtown area, at 25 miles per hour because we legally cannot reduce it to 20.
Oh, so it's a, we just can't do it, period?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, because I was asked that question. I, I just wanted to make sure we got some clarification. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, with that, we'll bring it back and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any questions, comments, or a motion.
Thank you for this. And I move to accept staff's recommendation.
And that's with the, the correction to the resolution?
With the corrections to the resolution.
A second with the correction?
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And did we get a vote from, from Vice Mayor Sasi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that motion passes 5-0. All right. Thank you, staff, for that report. Okay, with that, we have no old business and no new business. So we will go to our second citizens to be heard. And I believe Mr. Menes had a card.
Yes, and Bob Kopp as well.
And Bob Kopp.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, Staff, and Public. My name is Rafael Menes. I'm resident of Pinole. And I have a few topics I'd like to discuss tonight. First off, I'd like to note that the COVID-19 levels in our community continue to remain relatively low. I think it's at 1.76 per 100,000 now, as opposed to 1.73 the last time it was evaluated on November 16th. So a slight increase, but still within the relative band. But I agree with Councilmember Martinez Rubin that if you have yet to be, receive your booster vaccinations or your regular vaccinations for COVID-19 or the flu vet, you should get those because it's still out there and still can have severe negative health impacts if you get them, even if you're not in a sensitive population. I'd also like to wish everybody happy holidays in general. Happy Christmas, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa. They're all around the same time of year this year. December 25th, 26th through the 2nd, 26th through the 31st. So doesn't always overlap quite that neatly, but it does this year. Let's see. I also wanted to highlight a moment of courage in international politics. As people may or may not be aware, this morning, the President of South Korea attempted to declare martial law. And the legislature of that country, in combination with the unions and the people there, said that, you know, no, that wasn't justified. They stood up against it. They stood up for their democracy. And as a result, the president stepped back, even though he had the support of a significant part of the military. So I think it's important for all of us to remember that even when things seem overwhelming, even when it seems like people doing the wrong thing have the power to force things through, and there's nothing we can do about it. If we stand together, if we use the structures and systems that are built to preserve our constitution, that are built to preserve our democratic compact, then we can continue being a democracy if we're willing to fight for it. And finally, with regards to our systems or norms, I'd like to make a brief statement of criticism with regards to President Biden's pardon of his son, Hunter Biden. While I recognize his care for his son and the challenges that they both have gone through, the span of the pardon and the breadth of what it covers go beyond even what Richard Nixon was permitted to do. And I believe that it will harm the integrity of the pardon process going forward. Thank you.
And Mr. Kopp?
Yeah, my name is Robert Kopp, or Bob Kopp. I put together a group of contractors. We want to build a memorial for Robert. And we want to put it in at the Ball Field Parking Lot on Pinole Valley Road. I've given the information to the family. The wood we wanted, propose to use. We want to put cypress trees on both sides of it and put some guard posts around it. So nobody, if they run into something or tear up the car, not the memorial. So I've turned in the sheet to the city. And I would like to have you guys go ahead and approve it. It is at zero cost to the city. We're picking up the cost ourselves. We're going to build it, install it, and make it work. So I'd give everybody's help to get it passed through. I understand it's a real long procedure to get it in. But I was hoping we could, you know, get it in pretty soon. I was hoping to have it in by Christmas, but that was kind of a joke idea, I guess, because you guys don't move that fast. But I would like to get it in as soon as possible. I've known him for many, many years. We worked together on Dumpster Day from day one, and he was really a lot of fun and had a lot of character. And I enjoyed working with him out there. And seeing him around town, he'd always wave and talk to me, real friendly and a great person. So we'd like to get this memorial up as soon as possible. And it can happen within a couple of weeks after I get permission. I have the wood all set aside. It's uncut side, it's altered, different shapes. It's about six inches thick. And it's going to be a real nice thing. The family liked the picture, liked the wood, and they liked putting cypress trees on both sides. Because once the cypress trees grow, we'll put them far enough apart, you can slowly teach them, train them to go like this. So it'll be an arch over it, which will make it kind of stand out above a lot of the other things that's been done. So I'd appreciate all the help and expedite it as fast as you possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. And before our next speaker starts, I just wanted to say that we do have a committee, a committee, and we can refer that over to the committee. I believe that might be Councilmember Martinez Rubin and myself. But if I'm incorrect, there's a list. Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Oh, hang on one second so we can get your microphone on, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
There you go. Go ahead.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Can, got to remember this one. We cannot forget, we need to remember Mr. Robert Walker. I agree, the memorial. I think the name changing for the treatment center would be awesome. He worked there. I mean, actually, he lived there because he worked 45 years there. So I think it would be very appropriate. I think I was appointed Community Services Commissioner. I think this would be an idea to refer to the commissioners for memorials, not only for Mr. Walker, for other people, residents and people that have left us. Maybe to build some kind of a memorial for everybody in the city so we can remember them and honor them in one specific day. I'd appreciate it if we could put that on the agenda and speak about it and let other people weigh into the ideas and what we can do. And also, I'd like to thank the first responders for what they did. Actually, and I, this is what they do every day, police and fire. And we are so grateful to have them in town, be here with us. And I just want to thank everybody who was involved and always know that they're not alone. We are not alone. We're all in this together and make sure that we all support one another. But I, and, and to congratulate Matt Avery for his retirement. And also, Mayor, I'd like to think that maybe all of us could be inclusive in these memorials because I too remember past some people. I've lived here 48 years. And I would like to see some kind of memorial for a lot of these people, maybe a wall or something. Because it would be something to remember, these great, I call them heroes, and people that left us that did make some kind of mark in our lives and did, did a whole lot of things for us. So I would appreciate it. We can move on forward with everybody having something to say with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anybody online?
No other comments.
Okay. With that, we will move to adjourn to the regular city council meeting of December 17th, 2024, in remembrance of Amber Schwartz.